Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order this evening in place of Joy Messers. Rebecca Loper. Rebecca, thanks for your help tonight. Go ahead and call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next council, before we move on to our consent agenda, any additions to this evening's agenda? Not? We'll move on to our consent agenda. Several items. We have approval of minutes from the September 22 meeting, our special meeting on September 29, approval of the August finance report, a resolution approving employment for the police department in the telecommunicator area, and also a resolution approving employment for wastewater treatment plant department. We have one liquor license for Bingeyman's Caribbean Kitchen, and approval of claims in the amount of $949,109.93. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next council, our public appearances. We have Adam Plegge from FIDA who's going to go over the economic impact study from Fairfest and members of the Fairfest Board. Welcome, everyone. Adam?
Good evening. I spent a couple hours today going over FIDA's existing business survey, which is something we do every couple of years. And it's basically a conversation with the business leaders in the community about community services, workforce issues, housing, other related issues. But one of the questions was, what's Fairfield's strength as a place to do business? And the result was, time and time again, quality of life and Fairfield's artistic culture. So I think, just wanted to call out that a lot of us experience indirect benefits of having Fairfest and the convention center, and Art Walk and other events like that. But there's also businesses in town that experience a direct benefit from that. And that's what this survey tried to capture, and this economic impact study looks at. The arts, the art galleries, the retailers on Main Street, and the restaurants in town. So Fairfest, in its second year, we estimated attract about 6,000 to 6,500, both Friday and Saturday night. And of those attendees, about 37% were from outside Jefferson County, so people would not have been here spending money other than for Fairfest. And on an average, each individual spent about $63 in restaurants at the festival itself and other related Fairfield items. And that generated about $1,400 in hotel motel tax and $1,500 in lost revenue. So overall, there's about a net economic impact of $200,000 for having Fairfest. And while the survey isn't perfect, Fairfest is an ungated event, so we don't have exact attendance totals. We're relying on visual impact or visual assessments. We've used this survey before for other events in Iowa City, DeBute, Burlington. And I feel while the results may not be perfect, they're in the ballpark of what we're looking at here. So I basically just wanted to call out that Fairfield has a significant impact, as does Art Walk, as does convention center events. And that's just something to consider for the city in terms of supporting these organizations as we move forward.
Thank you, Adam.
Any other questions regarding the survey?
Any points, any questions, council? Thank you very much. Obviously, very positive overall. It was an outstanding event, very exciting. The crowds on those evenings were just visually stunning, amazing to see. But to really drill down and see what this really means to the community, at least, this is really just a surface look. There's really quite a lot that goes beneath the surface in terms of the reputation that our city develops, the attractiveness, people making decisions about work and about living. So we really understand that and really appreciate that as well. Now, I'd like to invite Richard Sarnad, who's from the board, and tell us a little bit more about what's coming up for year three.
Thank you. Just wanted to, you know, we don't really have a board. Fairfest is a group of volunteers headed by the folks at CREW. We also had major partners come in this year with KMCD, The Chamber, the city, FAC, the whole alphabet, ZBB, and Atamu Radio. But just quickly, some stories between the metrics, between the FIDA study. And I think one of the biggest stories is that this is the largest single event in 31 years that's a non-Ragbri event in this town. The second thing is, is that already in the second year, we're already seeing what I would call friends of Fairfield, an extended or an expanded community of people. These are people who not only come every year, but they also donate every year. So it's sort of an amazing phenomenon when you realize that people who don't even live in our town are very focused on our town having a national spotlight, really succeeding, building an economic engine. So much so, that they're donating, you know, six figures per year, per person. And so it sort of enhances your appreciation of what it means to be a community, and how your community can grow by events like this. The other thing is, that attending Fairfest in both years, we're national agents, that we use as booking agents. These are people who go around all year long going to music festivals. So they have a very good pulse on what it takes to become what we call a destination festival. And I mentioned this the first year I spoke to you all. A destination festival means you're published in Time Magazine or the like, you're listed with Bonnaroo and all the other big festivals, and the whole group of festies who go in a caravan and tour around every summer from festival to festival to festival. You're on their calendar. They're coming every year. They're spending money in your town every year. It creates an economic industry in and to itself. So that's why our group of donors and our volunteers are building this as an economic engine. We feel it spots light, puts a spotlight on Fairfield in a way that enhances everything we're already doing with CBB, FAC, Art Walk, et cetera. And while we will be filling out applications for lost funds, like we almost did last year, to solicit your help in building this event. It takes a couple of years of investment to build this up, because our fixed costs, as I've reported before, first year were basically fixed costs, $80,000. That's minus a really big headliner. All the additional monies we spent last year, or this year actually, which are well over $100,000. That's how you get Grammy Award, triple Grammy Award winner Los Lobos, Grammy nominee David Lindley, Grammy Award winner Rebirth Brass Band. The additional monies over $80,000 are if people want to step up and sponsor their favorite band, or get a group of their friends to sponsor your favorite country music star, that's how you shine the spotlight. That's how you bring people in. So I actually requested the lost application, by the way, this week, and was told there is none available. So I'm not sure why the application would change a whole lot from year to year. I realize you don't have the funds yet, and you're not ready to allocate, but it would be nice if the board could give me some idea of what day that application would be available, so we can go pick it up and fill it out.
Thanks, Richard. We probably just need to update last year's. And usually, we're making that available sometime in December. We'd be happy to make it available right away. So Rebecca, you can check on that.
It's on the website now.
It's on the website now?
It's on the website.
Yes.
Okay. Did anyone else want to mention anything from the other producers in the fest that I missed?
Richard, could I ask a question about the economics?
To you. So, since it's a free event, what's the sustainability plan moving forward? Are you going to continue to rely on donations to make this happen every year?
You know, basically, we're sort of in the mode, if you build it, they will come, in terms of sponsors. So the FIDA study was very important, in that we could document, you know, 14,000, 15,000, 16,000 people showing up for a weekend. That already is probably the largest free festival in southeast Iowa. We doubled or tripled. It's hard to tell our numbers this year. I expect us to double again next year, depending on the headliner. So the hope is that you'll attract very large corporate sponsors that want to be the festival headliner, and have the festival named after them, in a sense. The idea is to do this for four years with the existing donors that we have, and the help of The Chamber, the city, et cetera. At the end of four years, if we are unable to attract sponsors that will allow this to be sustainable, then we have to revisit the business model, and have to decide, okay, what would it take as an entrance fee? Ethically and philosophically, we would like to keep the barrier to celebration for all of the local communities as low as possible. But we're not looking for an endless, non-sustainable business model. It's really, you have to build it up with no barriers, we think, for three or four years. At the end of that, you revisit the business model, figure out what you need, as low as the barrier can be, and move forward. So it is sustainable. It's a great question.
I have something to add. I'm James Moore, station manager at CREW FM. And Shoestring, a community radio station, was approached to put on a major festival. I kind of say shoeless more than shoestring, if the truth be known. We thought long and hard about it, put a plan together, and got a bunch of support. It came together the first year, and then greatly expanded the second year. We're eager to, from the beginning, as a community organization, we're open to anybody who has great ideas to come forward. And the rest of the board, the committee core group doesn't even know this, but I just spoke with a woman yesterday who moved from a little place called Gulf Shores, Alabama. In 1982, The Chamber of Commerce wanted to start a little event to try to get some business activity past their normal summer season. They started a thing called the National Shrimp Festival, kind of a big name for a little town. I think this year, they had 250,000 people there, on average 50 to 100,000, and it's been built up carefully in a measured way over time. She is so excited, she came this summer and saw a Fairfest and said, "I cannot wait to work with The Chamber to get everybody involved." What makes an event like this work is really not just the buy-in, but the fact that people can make money, that they can celebrate their town, that together, we can see what we can do. So the sustainability question is the thing that she is most interested in, not just donors and major corporate sponsors, which, you know, there are beverage companies and so forth, looking for an opportunity like this in a town like Fairfield. But all I wanted to say is, we're open, like the radio station, and we get calls all the time. Somebody shows up with a master's degree from Yale and wants to help. Last year, a Kenyon College graduate came and gave an entire year to the community, working full-time for the station, that allowed things to move forward and really helped with Fairfest. These are the types of things, I think. We just got a call from Cityscape. What can radio, what can local radio do for a community? Would you mind writing your thoughts down about that? I said, "Yeah, I'd love to do that." You know, anybody who knows me knows I kind of like to talk about radio. And I also see some faces going, "He's not going to go too long tonight, is he?" He's not. And I don't mean to talk about myself in the third person, or where I have, it's inappropriate. Jason comes and we have a regular city business recap after each council meeting. And that's the kind of thing that as a community station, and not just the non-commercial station, this year, Tammy, Steve Smith, and the folks at KMCD stepping up together, that was the biggest, I think, escalation that opened things up for the possibilities. So we are really kind of thrilled with the results and the possibilities. But we're also humbled in that it will depend on who shows up, if they feel like this is something that's really good for the city. If we can get 20,000 or 25,000 people a year coming in the summer just for Fairfield, you know, whether we can do that will depend. But what a great goal. Working with the convention center, working with all the great folks, it's really been an amazing thing to watch. So I know we've said amazing a lot. I just wanted to close by saying, thanks to the city to the city for the efforts that you've put in. I know it's always an extra bit of work when you throw a show like this, but we hope that it's worth the effort, and we also hope that it can grow in a measured way to be something the mayor said last year at the press conference, a signature event among a town of signature events. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Thank you, James. We appreciate it. And thank you, everyone, for the report. Counsel, any other final comments, questions? Great. So we'll move on to our resolutions and ordinances. First is a resolution to accept the 12th Street and Burlington signal improvements as final. You have a letter from John Myers of French Rentiker, and we have Melanie here this evening. Melanie, if you can...
This is for the completion of the signal improvements at 12th and Burlington. The sidewalk improvements is a separate contract, so we'll be accepting those at a later date once he finishes the punch list items. So this is for Dickinson, a company of Oskaloosa. A payment of $47,238.75 is due now, with the retainage done in 30 days, if you are ready to accept the work.
Great.
To accept.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kalin. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Melanie. Next council, we have two items that will, two, yes, two items that will essentially be a part of our certification as a Blue Zone work site. And Michael, if you wanted to add anything to those, explain how these two fit into the policy area for...
I want to butt in just a minute. I know Michael's going to introduce this. I would just ask that when you adopt these, if you vote in favor of both of these policies, don't adopt them as ordinances, adopt them as policies. We've got one little line on there that needs to be amended. Friendly amendment, we'll take care of it. You don't have to go through...
Yeah, they are policy. The resolutions I brought to the council a few months ago were for the community policy portion of our Blue Zone designation. This is for the city of Fairfield as a work site. We're be joining the ranks of Iowa State Bank, Agro-Industrial Plastics, Cambridge Investment, Danner Oil, and all these other companies in town who have achieved work site designation from Blue Zones. So these are policies. They are not ordinances. Neither of these policies are backed by penalties of any kind. It's internal for employees. First of which is a volunteer policy that simply states that employees are encouraged but not required to volunteer their time to community events and programs that matter most to them. I know that quite a few city employees volunteered for Ragbri last year. The wastewater crew especially stepped up and handled the trash and recycling that night, which was a big job. The street crews, the parking wreck. I think everybody pitched in in some capacity. The library had some special events that weekend, or that night. So it isn't a requirement. This isn't forcing anyone to volunteer. Just saying that we as a city, as an employer, encourage our employees to volunteer.
And according to the Blue Zone research, people who volunteer in their lives will live 14 years longer.
On average.
Part of the...
Is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah, apparently it...
How many areas we did to volunteer to get that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the exact number, but yeah, there's some interesting research on volunteering. It actually says it has physiological benefits, lowers blood pressure, and helps with gastrointestinal problems. I'm not...
Even when it raises it, yeah, sure.
Look it up.
So... All right, so then the action tonight would be to make a motion to approve the recommended policy.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Revulinski. Any questions?
I have a question. The last sentence, "Employees may be asked by the supervisors to volunteer for department events." What's the purpose of that sentence?
As it states, they may be asked to help out internally, like the library might ask their employees to help out for a library fundraiser.
Would that be a volunteer thing?
That makes me uncomfortable having that sentence in there. So I would vote for this if I were to strike that sentence. I don't think we need it, do we?
Is that a deal breaker for the Blue Zones?
Was that recommended language?
It was necessarily recommended language, but it's completely non-binding.
I know, but I...
But there could be, could be a feeling of, from the employee, that my supervisor is saying, "Yeah, you really need to be here. It's a voluntary basis, but you really need to be here." And it could put undue pressure on that employee to say, "Yeah, I've got to volunteer for this."
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask department heads if there's anybody who would volunteer an example of where you might ask your employee to volunteer. See, I'll have to come to the microphone, Mr. Vaughn.
Sorry, Scott.
You're coming, you're next.
We've had a few family events at the library where staff members have volunteered without my prompting. And I don't think I would feel comfortable asking my staff to volunteer for a fundraiser. But if they offer it, you know, I take them up on it, so.
So we could change the wording to employees may volunteer for department events.
Yes.
Strike the asking portion.
Right.
Scott?
Yeah, I think it's redundant, but okay. It's already said in there. They're encouraged.
So there's definitely times in the fire department we have to go do, like in October, fire prevention throughout schools. Sometimes it's at night. At a meeting, we'll ask for volunteers to do that. I always get volunteers, but it is volunteers. They're not required to do that. And then there's times where we have mandatory training that people have to be at, and they pretty much know the difference between mandatory and what's volunteers.
Yeah. Doug, I think the thing that might be, make it a little bit more comfortable would be to strike example fundraisers. I don't know that we really have departments that do fundraisers, per se.
Parking wreck at first, is what I thought, but...
Yeah. Or we just make the second sentence, "Volunteer their time to community events, comma, programs that matter most to them, comma, and department events," as examples of things they may potentially, non-bindingly, not being asked to do, but if they want to volunteer for.
I mean, I don't see the added value of that sentence. Some employees may be asked by their supervisors to volunteer. There's no added value.
He was just saying to strike it, to add just that phrase.
That's fine.
Rebecca, you want me to read that?
Yeah, slowly.
Yep.
No, I think just...
No, we're just going to strike the lessons.
You want a comma, and the department events after program events, community events.
Yeah, community events.
Community events, comma, programs, comma, and department events.
Yeah, that's simple.
Something like that.
Okay. All right, so we'll...
I accept the friendly amendment.
Accept the amendment, second Revulinski. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
I thought that was going to be the easy one.
Yeah.
All right.
It was.
All right. This next one is bringing our, formerly our smoking policy into the 21st century. This is pretty standard across the board, that now they're called tobacco policies. So it's basically the same wording as the policy was before regarding no smoking on city property, but now includes all tobacco products. And it just states that this policy covers the smoking of any tobacco product and use of oral tobacco products. It applies to both employees and non-employees, visitors of the city of Fairfield. No use of tobacco products is permitted within the facilities or on the property of any city buildings at any time. This would be all city-owned buildings. The Law Center is not city-owned, so that would only apply to the city's portion of that.
Michael, are you saying the present policy only says smoking? Is that right?
It's rather outdated.
Yes, I agree.
Well, this is a little bit not dated properly either, because there's a lot of different types of ways that you can ingest tobacco products. Now, snuff was one that came to my mind first. It's a little can of stuff that you sniff through your nose, tobacco product.
Yeah.
But it's not addressed because you say oral or smoking. These new vapor cigarettes are, electronic cigarettes are a tobacco product, but are not covered in the same fashion that smoking is covered?
It says covers, it covers the smoking of any tobacco product and the use of oral. Next sentence, no use of tobacco products.
I, you know, based on that...
If you want to be specific, you can start listing them all.
Then why have the specifics of smoking or oral when it comes to tobacco products? Because isn't that redundant?
Sure.
Let's take it out.
Well, it's not redundant at all.
Nicotine patches, and people talking through it.
Well, yeah, there's so many tobacco products out there that vary so greatly, how do you, how would you lump that, John? Morrissey?
I'm listening.
Yeah, how would you, how would you do that? How would you lump that together? Because I know that there's a big discussion going on as far as whether some of these new smokeless tobacco devices are...
All I do is get an amending wording that says including. If you want to include oral and you want to include smoke, but you just talk about tobacco products generally. Otherwise, it's going to be an ever-increasing definition.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean. So do we have to be as specific as smoking and oral in this, or can we just have the policy covers no use of tobacco products permitted, period? You know, because the sentence here, right after that, is no use of tobacco products is permitted within facilities or on the property of any city buildings at any time.
Well, that's as generic as you can get.
Okay.
And I just keep it simple. It's a policy, not an ordinance.
So prior to that, where you're trying to define it as smoking or oral would not necessarily be needed?
It's okay to say that. I just suggest you say included.
Including, okay.
But not limited to?
Okay.
I would, I would offer amendment to this to include e-cigarettes, which may be considered not a tobacco product.
That's a sugar. Some people are using e-cigarettes to quit smoking.
But finally, they don't have to do it...
If we want to encourage people to quit smoking, cigarettes...
Yeah, but some people use it, and some...
It's tobacco in the cigarette.
It's not tobacco in the cigarette. It's a derivative of tobacco. It's not tobacco.
Fascinating.
It's just nicotine.
No, but there are ones out there that'll burn regular tobacco, too. They just create a vapor.
They create a vapor.
And the vapor is supposed to be innocuous to people around them. So, you know.
See, this is difficult in the 21st century.
It creates an appearance of smoking, which also, I feel, is a negative. If someone is using it as a means to keep them from smoking regular cigarettes, it is less dangerous to your health, because you're not ingesting all the, you know, all the junk that comes in the smoke. But for many people, it has been just, you know, a path to smoking. And it also sort of that behavior, and I don't know that anybody uses it here anyway, but, you know, of our employees. But as a, you know, as a policy, I think it would be good to have that, you know, to include that.
All right, so you're going to make a suggestion about where we just put that in the language?
Yes.
After oral tobacco products?
Policy covers smoking of any tobacco product, e, smoking of any tobacco product, e, electronic cigarette, comma, it's not in, that's different than a tobacco product, comma. So I would say in that sentence, in the fourth line there. This policy covers the smoking of any tobacco product, I would say, comma, use of e, electronic cigarettes, and the use of oral tobacco products, you know, as it says there.
So is that a motion to approve the policy? We don't have a motion to approve it yet at this point.
So I would move to approve the policy as amended.
Well, I had one other...
That's fine.
You want to add snuff to that?
No, 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 no.
Take that first.
No, I'm not, not that. It's the, it's the language of, that this is a policy for city employees, correct? Is that what I was leaning from this mostly? But it goes on to say that it's also visitors of the city of Fairfield.
Which to spare our employees from...
Which means, which means if I'm in the park with my family, and I've come here from some other city, and I'm a smoker, and I sit in the park in a shelter, and I have a cigarette, I'm in violation of this policy.
Buildings.
Which is just a policy. It's not...
It's not parks.
An enforceable ordinance or anything like that.
It's not parks. It's just city buildings.
Buildings.
Well, it says property.
Property.
Within...
Within the facility, on the property of a city building.
Property of a city building.
So park probably wouldn't...
So standing outside the building.
Okay, so, so the maintenance building at the park is a city-owned building.
Just don't smoke over there. Stay away from the building.
Those shelters are...
Just do your smoking, put some where else.
I'm just trying to think this through, you know? If we're gonna put a policy into place, it should be something that can be quantifiable.
Well, first of all, there's a state law against people...
They don't force them, the managers enforce them, right?
One person talking at a time?
The department's manager.
Is our, is our habit. Let's, um...
It's okay if you don't inhale.
That's right. Now, again, let's, let's put it, let's put it in context. This is, this is, these are policies for city as a workforce. Uh, so it really does only deal with those areas that the workforce would interact in, that would be in the, in the buildings. I understand we've got park employees and, but I, we're, I think we're just talking about buildings here.
That's what it says.
So, um, I think we'll just contain it to that. You're not suggesting that we be consistent and talk about outdoor spaces as well because that's a, that's a whole other can of worms.
Yeah, that is.
And it's not, and it's really not, and that, that dealt with the public more than it does our employees.
I think, I think some education with the employees would be beneficial along with this because I think automatically you're gonna have several that, um, view their job as being outside on the back of a piece of equipment that is an open-air cab, it's not an enclosed cab. And they have already been doing this for years, even though we're encouraging them to try to quit and we offer programs and we offer, um, health benefits, health insurance benefits and that kind of thing for people that do that. But we need to at least be realistic and, and understand that, you know, if, if I'm out there on the back of a riding mower cutting 10 acres of grass in a park and I've got a piece of chew in my mouth, that, is that the person you're gonna go after? That you wanna, you wanna hold this policy to?
I think the, uh, in my opinion, the sentence is clear enough that it says property of any city buildings.
I'm just trying to keep the buildings, tobacco...
If we wanna clarify it more, but...
No, no. It says within the facilities or in the property of any city building, so just in or around a building. And, you know, let me just say this, if we had more time, if we weren't trying to get this, this whole designation done before the 2014, the 2015 version of all these policy comes out, we're in a little bit of a hurry. I wouldn't have preferred to do it this way. I would have preferred to take this to department heads, to take this to employees, to have a dialogue, to start from that and then not push a policy down someone's throat. Part of me has a problem with telling an adult what they can and can't put in their body. But when they're on the job, do we want people using tobacco? Now cigarettes, they have that aspect of it's not just going in the body, the secondhand smoke is bothering other people. But chew or something like that, it's just going in their body and it's not necessarily affecting someone else. You know, I think I'm just gonna leave it to the department heads to deal with this. We're putting the policy in place. We're trying to encourage healthier living among our employees, but this is not an ordinance. There are no penalties with this, simply a policy saying this is our intention. And I think that because of that, the wording, I think the wording's solid, too, but we don't need to be overly concerned. We're not passing an ordinance here.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Revolinsky, second by Hamas. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Great, thanks. Uh, next council, we have a contract with Area 15 Regional Planning for our CDBG application assistance. And essentially this contract, Melanie, if you can come on up, this, this has a value of $3,500 for services, but...
Yes, um, this contract, uh, basically says that if, uh, Area 15 will help you with the application for the housing improvement, but, and if you get the grant, either you work with them and your application was free, or if you would decide to work with a different company for the grant administration, they would charge you the $3,500 for the grant application.
But if, for some reason, we didn't get the grant...
There's still no charge if you don't get the grant. But if you would get the grant and you choose somebody else, there would be a fee.
Great, and this, uh, again, would allow us to get this started because we do have a December 1st grant deadline.
Yes, yep.
So entertain a motion to approve the contract with Area 15 for CDBG application assistance.
Move to approve.
It moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, thanks, Melanie. Uh, next council, um, as you see in your packet, that Carl Chandler, our water superintendent, will be retiring by the end of the year and, um, has submitted a letter of resignation or le, letter of retirement, I'm sorry, not a letter of resignation. And, uh, Carl obviously has been, uh, the backbone of that department for many years now and has, um, provided, you know, tremendous service and tremendous leadership in that area. Many of us who've toured the plant, uh, over the last five years and seen a lot of the internal work that Carl has had done just within his staff, obviously saving the money, saving the city quite a bit of money in, in doing so. Carl's really to be commended for his years of service and, uh, and entertain a motion to accept, uh, his retirement letter.
Um, I have a couple of things to say before we take that.
Sure.
Um, Utility Committee met prior to the council meeting tonight at 6:00. And, uh, the, uh, the agenda item was to look at the letter and the committee has decided to accept Carl's retirement, um, as of December 31st. And we would like the council to also recommend that. But there was, there was a recommendation of an interim plant superintendent proposed by Carl in that letter. And we feel that that would be a prudent decision to be able to have that person step into that position and be that interim director or supervisor at the plant until we get a new administrator onboard here with the city of Fairfield and have the administrator begin the search for a new plant superintendent. So, uh, those are the recommendations that came out of the committee tonight to come to the council. I don't know if there's anything else that either Tony or Jessica might wanna say about it, but...
Were you gonna discuss the personnel things that need to be looked out?
The sick leave.
I, if you guys wanna discuss that...
I think we talked a little bit about that. I think that that probably would be more appropriate, that Carl have a meeting with Joy, who manages that for the city, and go over what it is that, that, that program would actually look like for accumulated sick leave.
So I guess, accepting this without the details of that portion of the letter yourself.
Yeah, that's, I don't think that's...
Right, right, accepting, accepting the December 31st retirement date of Carl Chandler is, is what this should be focused on right now.
Second.
Okay, moved by Hamilton, second by Revolinsky. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Uh, next council, um, as you are aware, Chief Julie Harvey has, uh, submitted a letter of resignation. Julie, in, in her letter, expresses her gratitude for the opportunity and the time that she spent as chief of the department, personal reasons for her making, uh, this change at this time. And, um, again, we want to thank Julie for her service as chief during this period of time. I think we all had, uh, great experience working with her in that capacity. Uh, we're happy that she's gonna continue to be a part of the Fairfield Police Department. Uh, but I would entertain a motion to accept Julie's resignation.
I'll move to accept.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. In my report, council would begin by, um, giving you a little background on the process to find a replacement for Chief Harvey. Uh, we did put out the word that there would be, um, that, that we would be looking for a new chief and, uh, we received interest from five of, five individuals, four current officers within the department. Uh, those interviews were held over two days last week. Uh, and, um, through that, throughout that, I was, you know, very impressed with the strength of everyone who came forward to, uh, indicate that they were interested in taking this leadership of the department, learned a lot about, uh, the department and directions that, uh, many of them would like to see it go through their leadership, which I think will help shape, uh, the direction that the, the next chief takes it. Uh, but upon deliberation and review of, of all of those, uh, it's my intention to appoint Captain Dave Thomas as the chief of police for the Fairfield Police Department. So, uh, traditionally, I ask for council approval to do that, so I would like to ask for a motion to, um, support that. And then we would, uh, begin by swearing Captain Thomas in as chief.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin, second by Hallie. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you very much. Now, uh, Dave, you'll join me out front here. Taking the oath of office, um, you'll just repeat after me.
Yes, sir.
All right, aye, and state your name.
Aye, David Thomas.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police chief...
Discharge all the duties of a police chief.
In the city of Fairfield...
In the city of Fairfield.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, if you'd like to say a couple of words, you're welcome to.
I didn't have a speech planned.
I didn't wanna put you on the spot, but I figured you'd wanna maybe... At least break the ice.
I, I'm already, and I do appreciate, and it's been a long couple of weeks, I won't take a lot of time, but, uh, right after Julie Harvey contacted me that, um, she wanted to, uh, go back to being a police officer and was, um, it was a, a very stressful time. But it's, it's been an easy transition. It was easy during the interim period when I was put in charge. One day I was, I had no responsibilities at all and the next day all of a sudden I had a lot. But everybody's pulled together. It's gone really well and, uh, I do appreciate this opportunity to serve my community to the next level, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next council, um, I have two appointments to boards. One is Cole Boatwright, who would be appointed to the Beautification Commission. He would be replacing Brian Messer, uh, who is stepping down. Uh, the other would be to the Civil Service Commission, Deb Johnson. Uh, Deb is, um, going to be replacing Fred Beener, who, uh, passed away recently. And, uh, you know, Fred's served on the Civil Service Commission for many, many years, was really an institution there. We really, uh, send our condolences to his family and thank his family for his service. But Deb Johnson would be replacing him as civil service. So I entertain a motion to approve those two appointments.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamas, second by Hamilton. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Uh, next council, there are two proclamations that we'll be issuing. One, uh, tomorrow afternoon at the manufacturer's luncheon, their annual luncheon. And we celebrate, uh, October as Fairfield Manufacturers Month. Uh, then also, uh, White Cane Safety, uh, I'm sorry, the, the White Cane Day, which is basically in honor of recognizing the rights and privileges of those without sight. Um, the Lions Club is responsible for, uh, doing a lot of work there, raising the funds in support of this, uh, locally and nationally. Uh, and their day is October 15th, so entertain a motion to approve both proclamations going forward in my community.
Second.
Moved by Revolinsky, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Uh, then just finally to report that, uh, Wednesday, the 15th, would be the final day for our report back to the CAT Board or the Vision Iowa Board about our fundraising and were we able to complete that final $210,000? I'm happy to announce that that has been completed as of last week. So all of that is being put together and reported to the CAT Board, so, uh, we should be safe to, to receive our full $1 million grant and move forward very quickly. Also wanted to mention, too, that, um, I was out at the skate park to look at progress, uh, over the weekend. And it's, it's really terrific, you know, what's, what's going on there. Fortunately, they're at a little setback today with about four inches of rain, but, uh, anyway, that's, that's coming along. And I think within the next three weeks, we're gonna see significant development, uh, out there as well. Derek, are we saying anything about another recreational amenity at this time?
Yeah, we can.
Why don't you come on up and give us a, some background on that as well? This was, I'm asking Derek to do this as a segue because it was inspired by the, uh, the development of the skate park.
Yeah, um, Chuck and Jan S.B. reached out to me and they wanna donate, um, up to $50,000 to an outdoor lighted basketball court. So, um, they kinda got the vision off, looking off of Oskaloosa Skate Park and basketball area. So it's really kinda neat to see the community be so generous into recreational opportunities.
And they want it developed right next door to the, right next to the skate park, so, and, and talk about the, what it, one of the features of it will be lighting.
Lighting, so we reached out to Musco and over the weekend, I got an email from Chuck that he contacted Musco and they're willing to, they cut their prices a little bit because of the generosity and this community betterment project that we're doing, so it's exciting news.
It's really terrific. Thanks, thanks, Derek. Yeah, I was, we, we really wanna thank Chuck and Jan S.B. for that generosity and that vision. And, and again, they were inspired by what they saw in Oskaloosa, uh, with the development of both the, the skate park and the, the outdoor basketball courts together. And they wanted to be sure that Fairfield was competitive there. So we'll look forward to those developments. Uh, that's all I had to report. Uh, we didn't have any committees sign up for reports, so I think we're done. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin, second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.